Welcome, everyone, back from regular session. Mr. Spandario, do we have anything to report from closed session?
No reportable action.
Okay, thank you, sir. I call the meeting to order. May I have a roll call vote, please? Roll call vote.
You.
Here.
Here.
Member Lozano.
Here.
Mayor Vandenberg.
Here. We will now have a silent prayer followed by the flag salute.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberties and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you read the replay statement, please?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Friday, November 24th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, November 25th at 9:00 a.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/MetrolCable14.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Agenda approvals and deletions and/or deletions, does the city council have anything? Seeing none, move on to, well, skip past age presentations and we'll go to I. Would you read the public comment, Madam Clerk?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with the city council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves the right to shorten the time limit for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda.
Thank you. Is there any public comment this evening?
Yes. First is Gail Weber for Beautification Committee.
My name is Gail Weber. I am the Chair of the Beautification Committee. I'm here with Candy Del Grande. We were expecting Amy Sandu also. She must be running late. In our last meeting, we were scheduled to clean up Fourth Street last Saturday, but we canceled it due to weather. But we are here to talk about Fourth Street. We are in need of garbage cans on Fourth Street, especially the D to E block and the block behind Spawns. There's like no garbage receptacles there at all. And so, a lot of, we have at least four food establishments on Fourth Street, and we find, especially in front of where I work at LaHeim, we'll find like somebody's coffee cup or somebody's waste container or their napkins and stuff. There's no place for these people when they're leaving some of these establishments to put their trash. We have a couple of trash cans across from LaHeim on the corner, and then the rest of, that I know of, are all the way down at Fourth and C Street. So, we have almost a two-block stretch with no trash receptacles. We'd also ask that you guys consider putting a pet waste container across the street from basically Velvet Grill, Barsetti's, and the back of Spawns. A lot of the residents at Galt Place, you go up there to relieve their pets, and a lot of them don't pick up, whether they don't have the bags or they just don't pick up. But we would like to see possibly a waste station put in. LaHeim would step forward to take care of making sure that the bags are refilled, and if need be, we would probably pay for some of them also. So, we're here, like I said, it's Candy and I right now representing the Beautification Committee, requesting that you guys consider putting trash cans on Fourth Street, especially since you're bringing all these events and stuff down like that. And we don't really have any place for the trash. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Ken Lee.
Good evening, councilmembers. I like to see a quarterly senior symposium to help address things to get done with the county, state resources, because there's a lot of current concerns that seniors voice individually. And if we all got together and voiced it at the same time, we could probably cure some of the stuff. There are big numbers of seniors getting the same scams. The internet, the automatic payments taken out of your accounts, credit card skimming, the food stamps are being skimmed on the credit card machines, and they won't give you your money back to state. And there needs to be more knowledge of state, local programs such as food security. There's gas money available to go to the doctors for those in need to meet their appointment. We need, basically, to inform people more of bus transportation in town and our neighboring local towns. There's health and safety issues, and basically, there are programs that are available that a lot of people don't know about. A lot of people don't know you can get meals from your social security supplemental. And you can get one of those car buttons, and they pay it. And so, now, you know, with the younger folks trying to attack the seniors, we need that now. And a lot of people need mobility equipment, but they don't have the resource, resources. We go to South County Services, which helps. And it's time to show our collective senior buying power, because it does change with numbers of people complaining about the same issue. I do have concerns at the flea market on fire control. There are more people cooking off their trucks now, such as barbecue pits, pizza pits, and they should be required to have a fire extinguisher. In the trucks, they have a fire extinguisher, but those that are cooking outside on trailers and stuff don't have fire suppression. And the flea market golf carts should be equipped with a fire extinguisher. You can get a fire extinguisher if you know where they're at, but by the time you run down there and get it, the fire's already grown. And by having them on the golf cart, it's a backup to help suppress the fire. Because, you know, plastic tarps, they burn and spread easily. The flea market in the old days used to have a requirement that the tarps be fire resistant. They don't require that anymore. Some flea market caught fire before, and a lot of people got burned bad because the plastic sticks to the skin and the clothing. And so, basically, it's just trying to ward off a problem that could occur. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just want to make a comment. So, I know the Commission on Aging in the past had done this, like, where they'd bring in, like, an IT expert that would do these things, you know, they'd do the sing or bingo. They would like do these educational forums where they'd educate seniors on different things, whatever. So, wondering maybe we could reach out to our appointees on the Commission on Aging, or I'd be happy to do, I know Armando's not here tonight, he's the, and just see if that's something, maybe they could start a conversation with bringing that stuff back or something.
Sounds like a great idea.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Chris Brosman.
Good evening. Not going to take much time. Last meeting, we had 1,200 new homes being expanded on the east side of town. One of the things that I left the meeting wondering was how our current infrastructure was going to be affected by those 1,200 new homes. Currently, we're paying SR1 surcharge for an expansion of the sewer. Then came SR2. And my question is, is 1,200 new homes, we've got 2.2 million or 2.2 gallons, million gallons a day capacity now. My understanding is the plant will take 3 million gallons per day. Now, of course, we ran across a problem previously in flood year where then we ended it on leaking into Dry Creek, and we lost some money on that one. I'm kind of just curious and just putting it out there, where will these 1,200 new homes and what will be the effect on our current sewer plant? And are we looking forward to SR3 tax to build it to capacity? Because my understanding is you can only build till 80% of the reservoir. And I'm thinking 1,200 homes, guys, is going to put us past that point. So, the effect on the rest of the citizens by putting up these 1,200 homes and how that's going to be funded. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Farmer.
Mr. Selling, is that something you could maybe put together? I know you, I asked you about this a few years ago, the capacity of the wastewater treatment plant, you know, how you're not supposed to go over a certain percentage, and then the state require whatever. I think it's maybe, is that something that you can maybe provide to Mr. Brosman, email, or provide to us, and then we can pass along to Mr. Brosman or something?
Yeah, we can definitely do that, yeah. The short answer is the 1,200 will not trigger the need for a plant expansion. But I can give you the details, yeah. I'll shoot you an email, Chris.
Thank you, Mike.
Is there any other public comment, Madam Clerk?
Not on this item.
Thank you. Next is report by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and/or committees. Vice Mayor Sandu.
Nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Papano.
On November 9th, Councilmember Lozano and I, myself representing the Air Quality Management District and him representing SECOG, attended a joint meeting with those two boards in addition to SMUD and the Regional Transit District. And it's kind of a, kind of a first-time thing, I don't know, statewide, nationwide, to bring those kind of four groups together. Each district had a presentation, and in the end, we ended up basically passing a resolution that states, in general terms, the ways that we're all acknowledging that we are sharing the same environment, the same transportation systems, and they all work together, so planning to, so that we're not individually planning moving forward. So, it was good. I won't say it was entirely kumbaya. There were some debates on hydrogen versus electric and where we should be going, but it's good, good, healthy discussion. And then later that day, I had a meeting of the Cable Television Commission. We had to address some personnel matters. And we have brought back prior director Bob Davison as the interim director going forward for at least the next several months until some things get ironed out. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Farmer.
Yeah, so on the 13th, I attended the cast meeting, cities and schools together, and was attended by elementary superintendent, high school superintendents, and some of the board members. We went over the usual agenda items. We have a standing safety item that we always discussed. So, we actually had, our SRO officer was there, was nice. Chief was also there. And we kind of, you know, just went over everything it has to do with school safety and all that. So, that's an ongoing discussion we have. They did have, like, a fentanyl awareness presentation at the schools recently. And then their upcoming, I believe they're doing the every 15 minutes, which is the DUI presentation that they do. I believe that's going to happen at one of the high schools, if I recall. I like having the SRO there, because they're like the boots-on-the-ground on the schools, and they're kind of telling us, you know, what they see, issues happening and all that. We talked about enrollment. Good news is, elementary district actually is slightly up enrollment, which they were surprised. High school is still down a bit, which they expected. And then, the only other thing was, and I don't know if I'll be stepping out of line, Chief, on the SRO thing, is that okay to mention that? So, the police department was able to acquire, secure a grant to possibly fund, it still has to come to council a little early, but to possibly secure an additional SRO officer. School district's been asking about that, so it's exciting news if that ends up going forward, that could take place. So, outside of that, it was a good meeting and good discussion. Thank you, Craig, for coming and talking about development and things. And I was looking forward to those meetings. And I think that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Lozano.
I will be short. I also attended the joint board meeting, but before that, SECOG meeting happened, and there's nothing significant to report on that. The next SECOG board meeting is December 11th, and I'm sure I'll have more to report. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. I attended the Consumers Groundwater Authority meeting, basically continuing debate, continuing debate about budgetary restraints. And beyond that, there's nothing really to report. Attended the Youth Commission meeting, and they're just still setting up for next year. And they seem much more focused and organized than the previous years. It's very good to see. With that, we'll move on to the information and consent calendar. It is recommended that items 1 through 3 be acted on simultaneously unless separate discussion and/or action is requested by the council members. Do any council members wish to do so? Is there any public comment on this item?
Not on this item.
With that, I would be looking for a motion to receive file warrants for period ending November 8th, 2023. Minutes of special meeting of October 25th and the regular meeting of November 7th, 2023. And Consumers Groundwater Authority fiscal year 2023-24 annual cost contribution. Do I have a motion? Moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilman Lozano. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papano?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Next is regular calendar, city's manager's office. Subject is a cannabis public engagement update, November 2021-2023. Mr. Heinz.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm here to give an update on the cannabis public engagement update. On June 20th, the council approved an updated iteration of the 2023 Cannabis Engagement Plan. And I'm here to sort of give you an update. You'll find that on page 2 of 4 of the agenda. We spoke about the first three items during the June meeting, and I'm here to give an update regarding the fourth item, which is develop informational sessions. We had four community forums on June 27th, 29th, August 22nd, and September 20th. The feedback from those engagements can be found in the staff report, and you're welcome to read those, and I'll be available to chat about those comments as well. The engagements or the forums featured the presentation by FM3, which gave the initial survey results. And then, we did a straw poll in the room and got everybody's opinion. The feedback from that is also attached to the staff report. And we also gave the folks an opportunity to do a more open-ended word cloud. And those clouds are attached to the staff report as well. Last part of the meeting, which I found the most engaging, was a free-flowing conversation amongst the attendees regarding where our community should go as it relates to commercial and medical cannabis. It was a good conver, they were good conversations. After we did the community forums, we engaged certain community groups. And so, I presented the FM3 survey to the Galt Joint Union Elementary School District Board, and that was done on October 18th. I also convened the city manager's ad hoc community roundtable on October 25th. You will find their comments in the staff report as well. I also gave a presentation to the Commission on Aging, the Planning Commission, Beautification Committee, and the Measure R Committee as well. And so, we're getting the word out there and trying to get this feedback to the council. And again, on page 3 of 4, I think that's some sanguine feedback from the public forums and community roundtable for council's consideration. And Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item?
We have three public comments. C. Mayhew.
Hello, my name is Chris Mayhew. I'm a longtime Galt resident and US Navy veteran that has been diagnosed with PTSD. And I was a correctional officer for five years with CDCR. I suffer from chronic migraines that'll cause me to miss work and family activities. I was prescribed medication that the side effects were suicidal ideations and tendencies. I've never had those side effects before. I was injured in the line of duty while escorting an inmate. The, so, I had to give up my career as a correctional officer. The use of cannabis products has helped me with managing the pain without the use of opioids or other medications that cause other issues. There's a lot of other medications that will affect your liver, your kidneys. So, I'm up for, or I'm speaking on behalf about using the cannabis products to help me manage the pain. And I feel that a local dispensary will help the people obtain their medical and recreational cannabis. It would help with bringing tax dollars to the city instead of Sacramento and Stockton. I do not drink alcohol, but if I did, I'd have access to many bars, grocery stores, and liquor stores, and even gas stations that sell alcohol. The people who use cannabis are already in the community, so we just want access to cannabis locally. And I'm not saying let's build a dispensary on every corner, but the dispensaries are heavily regulated. They have armed security. They are regulated by the state and by the counties. There is a vetting process to get in there. Your ID gets scanned. You get verified that you're allowed to possess cannabis products. And I believe that the statistics of DUIs from the use of cannabis versus the use of alcohol, I believe the alcohol is much higher statistics for people drinking and driving than a lot of people who want to use cannabis products. So, I believe that a dispensary locally would help out with the, will bring taxes to the city, and will help the people who are using cannabis products locally instead of our tax money going to Sacramento or Stockton. We could keep it in town. So, and I'm all for the, the safe use of cannabis. I'm not saying, hey, everybody, let's go out, let's go party. Much like alcohol is regulated to an extent. I'm not saying, hey, let's make it a free-for-all. Let's let them walk around the neighborhoods. Let's let them go to parks, using it in your house, like a lot of people drink alcohol in their house. I don't drink alcohol, but I will use some cannabis products that will help me de-stress. That'll help me just relax. Simple, simple things. Cannabis don't have hangovers, and the risk of, like, liver damage from cannabis is not there. My mother was an alcoholic. She died of cirrhosis of the liver and pancreatitis from alcohol use. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it.
Scott Robinson.
Hi, everybody. My name's Scott Robinson, and I operate a cannabis dispensary. I want to show you, with you, what I see on a daily basis. I see over 100 people a day, most of them middle-aged and elderly, that are coming in to shop for products to find relief. I want the same, that same thing for the people in Galt. Cannabis has been legal in the state of California for a few years, and there are Galt residents who are still burdened by having to travel to find the products that will provide them relief. I often hear that people can just get it delivered, but an in-store interaction with a trained and knowledgeable employee is a far superior experience in finding the products and help that they deserve. In the town hall discussions, there were many concerns about the sample size of Galt residents that were surveyed. To quote the presenter of the survey results, she said, "In terms of the sample size, this is a great sample for the community, for a community this size. And typically, we do many polls around 400 people in larger cities, and Galt is pretty small communities, so we're happy to come up with almost 400 respondents." Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Scott.
The next is Ashley Cammer on behalf of Greg Davidson.
Good evening, city council and staff. Happy holidays to you and your families. My name is Ashley Cammer. I'm here to read a public comment on behalf of community member Greg Davidson. Good evening. Thank you for allowing my public comments to be read into the record in this unorthodox manner. But as you all know, my ability to attend tonight's meeting has to take a backseat to my health issues. I've spoken during public comments at city council meetings many times in favor of a clean, safe, and well-run cannabis dispensary in Galt. I've met with some of you in person and made my case. I was an active participant in our city manager's Citizens Cannabis Panel on retail cannabis sales in Galt. Your own due diligence by visiting Davis Cannabis Collective has shown you, shown you how clean, safe, and well-run a cannabis dispensary is. My recent health issues have shown you how unfair it is to make someone like myself have to rely on the ability to get to Sacramento or Stockton to shop at a clean, safe, and well-run dispensary, to say nothing of Galt residents in similar situations, those without a vehicle, or the extra time and expenses a trip to Stockton or Sacramento entails. I've provided you with hard data from the CDC, NIH, and Pew Research Center, to name a few sources, to help you reach your final conclusion. I've shared with you receipts from Davis Cannabis Collective to show you how much tax revenue the city is losing out on. I've shared my opinion that the tax revenue generated by the cannabis dispensary could be used to help the community in many ways. I've told you all how a cannabis dispensary generates income for other local businesses like nail salons, coffee shops, restaurants, and all the small businesses that are the backbone of Galt. The famous baseball movie, Field of Dreams, put it best, "If you build it, they will come." As I just mentioned, when a marijuana dispensary opens, particularly in a community without one, they are destined to attract consumers. Those consumers will naturally explore the surrounding area and oftentimes will frequent other businesses nearby. This is nothing but a positive for the surrounding locally-owned businesses near the dispensary. I've pointed out that every dollar spent at a dispensary is $1 less for the black market. For all these reasons, I urge a yes vote on moving ahead with a clean, safe, and well-run cannabis dispensary here in Galt. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Number of public comment, Madam Clerk?
Number of public comment.
All right. Does the council have any questions?
This survey from FM3, that was presented to us before, right?
Yes, we presented that months ago.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to say for the public, if anybody hasn't seen it, our agenda packets are posted online on the city's webpage. It's very interesting to read these, but we, I for one, I always appreciate the public comment. I hear from people on a day-to-day basis, both in person and email and phone call, all forms on both sides of this topic. And as I tell all of them, that I think the goal of the council was to, obviously, start with outreach. I mean, we're just, just speaking for myself, because I can't speak on behalf of my constituents, but I feel like my job is to allow a discussion to take place. but I feel like my job is to allow a discussion to take place. Regardless of my own personal feelings on something, I think it is fair to let people weigh in on this, and I think the city manager has done that, and allowed that through the forums and through the surveys. And I think, not saying that there's not more outreach that could be done, but there's been substantial so far. So, I appreciate that, and it's been educational to hear from all the people that are on both sides of this topic. It's not an easy one to talk about. We knew it wasn't going to be when we decided to let this, you know, outreach go forward. So, anyways, I just further encourage people to reach out to your council members, myself and others, to, you know, weigh in on this, because we're your elected officials, and it's our duty to act on your behalf. So, I encourage you to keep reaching out and keep doing that. So, that's all I had to say, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to make-
Thank you. Mr. Lozano? Yes. Sorry. I, I got that wrong. I knew it sounded wrong when it came out. City manager, the individual, the company that took the polls, was that the same one we used for Measure Q?
Yes.
So, and the reason I bring that up is, I was a little bit skeptical when it came to Measure Q, but they were actually spot-on. So, I think that gives, you know, when you look at the numbers, you wonder, how did they ask the questions, how did they frame the questions, et cetera, which are all great questions to ask, you know. Psychology can be a tricky thing when framing things, so that gives a lot of weight to how accurate these probably are, considering they know our community already from past, past efforts. Chief, if I may put you on the spot for a moment, as some of the public comment was being made, can you briefly address the public use of cannabis and what is and is not allowed?
So, as was highlighted, one of our speakers talked about the use of the cannabis in your home like you would alcohol. And so, you can look at the regulation being the same way for cannabis in public. So, there's restrictions to the use of the cannabis in public, and, and there are sanctions for those violations. I'm not sure what specific information you want related to that, but personal use of the marijuana is permitted in the state of California.
So, great point. As alcohol is not legal to consume in other than pre-designated outside areas in front of restaurants, for an example, those same laws apply to cannabis use. You can't, just because any city would approve a cannabis dispensary doesn't give anybody the authority to go to the park and start using.
Correct.
So, as far as the, you know, wholesomeness of your city, I don't see it changing any in the public view, so to speak.
And I wouldn't speak for the city attorney or the council, but the council can further regulate things through the municipal code related to the use of marijuana or any other.
Yeah, that's, that's a great point. The city, correct me if I'm wrong, we have the right, or the authority to regulate the strength, type, size, et cetera, et cetera, of all the cannabis along the vast majority, because I did visit the Davis Cannabis Collective, and there is a much wider variety of products than I think most people realize. I appreciate all the outreach, because I've noticed there's been a small change in, as the education has happened, which is a very good thing to see. So, I was, when I visited the Cannabis Collective, there was probably 70% wider product variety than I had anticipated. So, does anybody else have a question?
I, I had one more comment I just wanted to bring up. I forgot to, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just wanted to mention, you know, you mentioned educate, I, I do think that regardless of what happens with this, this topic going forward, that education has been, I think it's been good that there has been a lot of education overall. One thing that stood out to me, I'm just kind of going through the, the survey here on our packet, is that when the people were asked if they were aware if it was illegal or legal to sell cannabis products in Galt, 20% thought it was legal already. 29 said it was illegal, which is correct, but 51% didn't know. And so, you have 71% that are basically inaccurate or didn't know. So I think what that shows you is that maybe this is a topic that people don't pay much attention to for whatever reason. But, again, I think that's where the education comes into play, and regardless of, like I said, where this goes, I think it's fascinating to see that. And I think that the silver lining in all this is that people become, I know that us council members have become more educated just by talking and hearing from people and seeing, you know, and being at forums, right, and hearing people talk. And so, anyways, I just want to say that, Mr. Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you. There's no vote required on this? It's just purely informational as we are moving through the process? Councilman Lozano, you have something to add?
Yeah, just, just a couple of comments. I think it has been, and like I said, I want to thank the city manager and city staff for the public outreach. I think it was very wide and, and captured many of our viewpoints here in the city. And so, I just want to state that it's been probably almost a three-year process for me when I first started looking into this, because some folks who are dispensary owners asked to, to meet and talk about it. And, you know, I've had to meet, or not had to, I've had the opportunity to meet with people on both sides of the, the, the topic. And I think it's pretty interesting, because we've had, I've had emails from people on both sides talking about health effects and benefits and, and, you know, issues with crime, and not how there are not issues with crime. And I went into this thinking, you know, this isn't an issue about me and my personal feelings. And, but I did meet with one constituent just recently, who, who I made that statement to, and she said it best. She says, yes, you represent the entire city. And whether or not it is, you know, any of these issues you have to weigh in on, because in research, as many people know, depending on where you get your data, you could have, you know, opposite sides of the same data, and opposite, you know, results and thoughts about the same data. I've attended a conference on, on cannabis and, and the legalization in Colorado and dispensaries and how all those work. Also had the opportunity to, to visit two dispensaries. And I will say this, that I was surprised by the operation. And they knew I was coming, and I was going to have a lot of questions, and they were both very well, did a very good job of answering my questions. So, for me, I think as, as this moves forward or not, you know, the real issue is, is it the right fit for the community? And one of the pieces of data that I was able to gather at a CalCities meeting conference, as well as just my own reaching out, is that I think that someone mentioned the black market in terms of it cutting into that, that legal market. And what I found was that there were a few cities that have dispensaries and initially had a specific tax rate on it. One is Desert Hot Springs down in the Coachella Valley, where they started in 2017. I think they were one of the first dispensaries in California, and they started 18%. And now they've, over the years, to keep the business going in their community for the need of the, the money, they've reduced the tax amount, because the dispensary was not going to be able to continue on with the way that the tax structure was for the local tax. I want to point out that the state at no point that I've heard has ever said, well, you know, we'll reduce our compounding interest tax from the time that the seed is thought of to the time that the product hits a dispensary store. So, and is sold. And so, you know, it's, it's been incumbent upon a few of these cities to reduce the rate to keep the business afloat. And when I hear our consultants say that it's going to be bringing in about $400,000 a year, whatever that tax rate is, I think it was 10% that they quoted, the way the market is now, and how unstable the, in my opinion, unstable the, the legal market is because of the black market, I think that to focus in on the, the profit that the city would make from it is probably not the right thing to do at this time. And I just say that because not a lot of people know that. When I talked to the constituents that I had spoken to before about the same item, they had no clue that that was an issue. The other last thing that I found was, or not the last thing, one of the, and I'll stop here after this, but one of the last things I found interesting was three of the cities that I talked to are very small, some smaller than ours, and their decision, and this was talking to policymakers, to have the, to authorize dispensaries in their, in their cities was somewhat leaned on the fact that they needed an additional tax revenue to keep the city afloat. And I can appreciate that as a policymaker. But again, I go back to, is it the right fit in our community? And, you know, we just, I think we're doing well financially, and Measure Q will kind of, as that flushes out, will give us a better idea. And so I don't know that the, the, the need for the tax revenue is necessarily there, especially in a market in which tax revenue is being reduced across the state for dispensary. And I'll say that it, it's, like I said, it's an interesting concept, because when you start talking to people about it, like what my colleagues have said, is that it's, the education piece is, is, has been pretty eye-opening. And I appreciate folks that feel the need to use cannabis products for medical reasons. And I appreciate Mr. Davidson and his comment. Thank you, Ashley, for reading that tonight. It, it is, there, there is a need for people. But, like I said, is, is the question for me is really, is it the right fit for our community at this point in time? And, and so, I'll leave it at that. I do want to thank the constituents that I was able to meet with, either by email or phone or, or in person. Our local coffee shops here have seen me quite a bit. And, and I want to thank Scott and Ashley for being open to asking, answering questions that I have, and really enlightening me to the, to the environment and the, and the, and the market, really. So, I'll leave it at that. Thank you for allowing me a few seconds to talk.
You're quite welcome, sir. I, I think, you know, the tax revenue portion of this is, unlike Measure Q, which was, we could compare to Measure R and know a set value to expect if passed or failed, but this is very speculative. Mr. Splendario, as far as, you know, a cannabis collect, or a cannabis outlet that fit our community, what leeway does the city have in choosing any particular style and/or company over another, if any?
The city has a fair amount of discretion in that regard. Do you want me to give you examples, or you just want to know yes or no?
Yes, that's, that's good. So we, we do have leeway-
Yes, yes.
A fair bit of leeway in that area, so that, that's a, you know, another variable, obviously, and it could go on for a long conversation, but it's good to know that we can have something, because, you know, Rich and, and Mr. Farmer also, and everyone, you know, as mentioned many times during many topics, that we are not, we are not a big inner-city, so to speak, and we try to cater things to the type of community you have, such as the Saturday Market, which is a good thing. That's, that's a good place to be. So, thank you for that. I, I would ask staff that, you know, reading through some of the comments at the end of the presentation slides that we were given in the staff report, people brought up good concerns, you know, things such as property value and crime. And if, if statistically we could be brought, you know, with those and others, that it could be brought to our attention that, you know, over a wide variety of things, areas, populations, cities, that this does or does not harm communities, you know, I, I think that would be helpful. There's always the same argument online, at least, that as soon as you have cannabis, you're going to have, you know, X, Y, Z, and, and, you know, people always counter it with different arguments, but it would be good to have that part of the staff report in the future, if possible. So, sorry. With that, we simply approved the consent calendar as present, nope, that's the wrong item right there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
On second thought, just listening to some of the comments, I don't want to spend time echoing them too much, but regarding the revenue, that's distant last concern in my consideration of this, this issue. One, it's not that much money, as has been stated. This city's doing pretty well financially right now. This basically comes down to two parts of the argument that we've heard over and over and over. And that is that there are people who need it, use it, go elsewhere to get it. I've talked to people in neighboring communities that are going to other places where it would be closer for them to come to Galt. On the other side, I've heard, you know, quite a few arguments that it's a scourge and it's going to bring, you know, all kinds of trouble. So, this is just a, a question between those two. It's, it's good versus harm for the community. I'm not willing to risk any harm for a measly $400,000. So, I just wanted to put that kind of out there on the record, that that's, that's where my, my focus is, kind of those, those two competing arguments.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead. Mr. Farmer?
Yeah, I, I do actually want to echo a little bit. I very much agree with what Mr. Lozano started out with and what Mr. Papinau stated. And I, I think that all of us have kind of maybe mentioned this at one point. You know, for me, like, the revenue is just not even like a factor in the decision for me, honestly. It, like, like Mr. Papinau says, it's really not that much money. Could it be helpful in some way? Yeah, I'm sure it could. But for me, it's just more about, you know, like Mr. Lozano said, is this a good fit for our community? It comes down to, you know, is there a need? I, I look at, I look at things like this with the quality of life, because I, I use that term a lot. And I think a lot of the things that I've advocated for really much fall into that frame. And on one hand, I'll have, you know, some people that say, well, their quality of life, like Mr. Davidson, for example, I mentioned, I use him, if I'm sure he doesn't mind, his quality of life would be much improved if he was able to acquire cannabis for his medical reasons at a cheaper cost without having to pay delivery fees, and, and it was local, and he could go somewhere where it was safer, and, and someone who has mobility issues. And there's a lot of seniors that use his product, and they're in the same boat. So for them, the quality of life issue is very much, they feel the quality of life would be improved by having access. On the, on the flip side of that, I've heard from people, who, again, I have much respect for, come and say that they believe that a cannabis dispensary in Galt would ruin the quality of life in our small town. It's not a good fit for our small town, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, you mean, it's very subjective. And, but again, you know, one thing I think about is, you know, we have, and Chief, incorrect me if I'm wrong, but we have a high rate of DUI arrests in Galt. It's, it's a thing. I don't know why, maybe because not much to do in a small town, except maybe drink alcohol. I don't know. I mean, I drink alcohol occasionally myself, but I look at alcohol and I think, you know, we can buy alcohol everywhere. I could walk into Save Mart with my, you know, with a five-year-old tagging along and buy whiskey or whatever, right? And there's no benefit to alcohol, in my opinion, to, to, to the body at all. I've lost family members to DUI. I've had my own family involved in DUI accidents. My daughter, most recently, to a DUI driver. It's very scary. So, and one could say, well, if you have cannabis, then you're going to add, you know, just add to that, because then you can have people driving around under the influence of cannabis, and you're just going to exploit, you know, exponentially that, that factor. So, again, both sides. But I think it's funny that there is some people that are very, very adamantly against cannabis, but yet alcohol is just so readily available, and it's just kind of a strange, perplexing thing. But again, for me, it's about, it's about whether it's the right fit, like Mr. Lozano said- said, it's not about the money. I really care less about the tax and what we do with it. But I just want to state that I, I definitely think that people come to me, I want them to know for well. I'm not looking at, I'm not even considering this at all because it's about money. This is not why we're talking about this at all. It's simply allowing a discussion to happen and to hear what people want. And so, thank you again for letting me speak again, Mr. Mayor.
You're quite welcome. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
May have a few comments. This is a very controversial topic. Thank you for everybody's public comment on this meeting and public comment for before we have other meetings. I appreciate everybody, and we know this is a medical use, there is a lot of people, yes, we need them here to be a cannabis, you know, commercial, opening a dispensary. But there's a couple question on this. Mr. Hines, as you know, the California is legalized, but how many cities in California still is banned on, legalized? Or what percentage still the cities is not have you?
Vice Mayor, I don't have that number, but I can tell you in the region, none of the cities, other than the city of Sacramento, permit this.
And then, I think the long line, the same question, I believe I asked you, but it was kind of, you're a little bit clear, but still was if you can little bit more give us the information about our surrounding cities, especially the Lodi, Elk Grove, and the part of Sacramento County does not, they ban on the commercial cannabis. There is any study or there is any reason it was not? Because the reason I would like to educate on that, that's a very surrounding city. I, I believe, I, I, I know the Starkton have it and Sacramento have it. But if in, in a future any meeting, if you can get some kind of information and give to us, I really appreciate you.
Vice Mayor, regarding both Lodi and Elk Grove, I think the fact that they don't have it is because those policymakers don't have an appetite for that discussion.
All right.
And it's plain and simple.
Thank you, thank you. And the, my next note, question, you did all the form, right?
Yes.
And there was a form, I think on, let me look at that. Excuse me, let me give me a minute. I think first form was on, I think February, I think first was on June 27, right?
Yes.
And I believe I was on that form, that's the only one I attended that form, too. On this form is support was 13 and opposed was four. And did you maybe, your recollection, how many local citizen was Galt on that form? There was some from, there was not in a Galt city, and there was outside advocating the cannabis, right?
I, I, I don't recall the general locales, but I know, I do know four of the individuals that were there represent cannabis enterprises. As, and I do think that maybe a couple of those folks, their votes are reflected in that poll.
Okay. And then, just the other two, I'm going to also pointing out, on the last forum, there was on September 20th, right?
Yes.
And that support was four and opposed was eight. That kind of forum totally changed from first to third one.
Yes.
Do you have any idea or your knowledge of what, what happened?
Well, I think the more forums we had, the more interest we had from the public, and the more interest we had from the public, we got more of a indication that it was, at least based on the folks that were in the room, it's more of a 50/50 feeling versus what's reflected in the FM3 survey. And again, this is just the folks who attended the forum.
Yes, so, so it's, it's looked like it's, we are very good education, but when we start the education, is not that many citizen involved, but when it's go through, it's more citizen involved, and that's was the true feedback we get.
Right. And, and there are, there are a lot of instances where our good friends at the Davis Cannabis Collective were there and providing this education. However, once folks were educated, they were still entrenched in their original opinions. It's just, they did a good job of dispelling some of the basis for that opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Hines, you did all this education, you did all this, thank you very much. And then, this is not the meeting is have, we have any decision. Thank you for a lot of people supporting, and there is people, they also on the other side do. My opinion is, I'm going to look up more research, more value, listen to more people, and what we can make a decision. And I also would like to make a very short statement. This is obviously very controversial topic. It is something that has not been legal in our city. In our neighboring city, Elk Grove and Lodi, I want to be careful we are making this decision. It will have an important to our community, positive or negative. I see that over time, there is a more support for this. If you look at the survey, in 2021, it was a 50%, then it changed to 58% to support. In 2021, it was a 43% opposed, then it's down to 36%. But 30, 36% is also, you know, our citizen. So be, be, I, I, I have a little bit concerned, too. And there's a support for, according to the survey, that does at all diminish the voices of those opposing. We have to take into account many things, the community voices, opinion as well. So at this time, we observing, we are, there's a written comment, there is a public comment. Thank you for everybody's comment, public comment. And the same thing, I'm going to put, same thing like in there is a tax dollar. Yes, every city need, and this city also need a tax dollar. But when there is a comparison with quality of life, something our citizen, then to me personally, we can get money, some other resources, too. So certainly, thank you for everybody, and I hopefully, you know, this can we go long? I don't know how long, I will go with all the council, and we certainly, at the end of the day, we will make a right decision, whatever the, our citizen wants. Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, may I? I appreciate you letting us have a discussion.
Well, that's what we're here for, and it would be out of character for you not to have an opinion.
You know, I, I just, it made me think of something when you were talking, Paul. You know, one thing that people ask me a lot, and I don't think that obviously is reflected in a survey or public comments, is people always say, you know, they, they mention crime, right? One hand, crime's going to go up, one hand, it's not going to affect crime, so on and so forth. So, I have a question for you, Chief, and it would be great if I could say, you know, in your former life, when you were an officer at such and such city, but correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think you've actually worked in another city at any point in your career where cannabis has been legal, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. So then I would frame this a different question, and again, I'm not asking for your personal opinion, I'm only asking you if you have any data or any information you could share. Do you have any constituents, I'm sure you do, but any that come to mind in any other cities that you have had conversations with that do allow cannabis and have, had or have a discussion about crime rates after they've, you, you know where I'm going with this? Is there anything you could add to that?
Yeah, I don't, I could, and I will, when the council wants to hear from me on that. I think it's premature to deliver something off the hip here without being able to quantify it in a, in a
Yeah.
...professional presentation. But
Great answer, and you'd
Yeah, and at the end of the day, we, we, we work to the policy that the council delivers, right?
Because I, I like, it would be important to know, just out of curiosity, because I don't know that we've, again, somebody said earlier, it's like, depending on which survey you look at, it could be, it could show you this or that, so I mean, very, I guess, can be construed, but I, that would be interesting to see. Somebody made a statement to me recently, and it's, and it's kind of stuck with me, they said, you know, if Galt allows cannabis dispensary to come into Galt, everything that goes bad from that point forward, whether it's more homeless or crime, has any upswing at all, or anything that's bad, that happens after that, it will be blamed directly on that decision. And there is no truer statement than that right there, I can tell you. I know that to be true, but, and that's just the nature of a decision like that. But anyways, I would look forward to that if the time should present itself and we do have that, Chief, thank you.
Yeah, and I have, when Pacifica obviously was launching their cannabis program, we, I attended a presentation and, and some things with their chief sitting at the time, because that was the thing statewide about the launching of cannabis, cannabis programs. And we can certainly deliver lessons learned in Colorado and other, you know, places. When it reaches that point, we've remained silent because there's a time and a place for those kinds of discussions. And so, when council directs it, we're, I'm happy to deliver that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'm done for sure this time. Thank you.
Yeah, I will hold you to that now, then. Okay, with, with that, we will move on to communication.
None this evening.
And then, no city clerks report? No, so, communication by staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One more note about the cast meeting we had last week. In a prior meeting, I had asked the school district to develop a proposal to light their softball, baseball fields, in the hopes that it would provide some relief to some of the issues we're dealing with, with field scheduling. They indicated in the cast meeting that we just had, that they're still working on that proposal. I would expect that proposal to be ready sometime during late winter, early spring. So I'm just giving council a, an advanced warning, and it's not so much a warning, but just a heads up that, that proposal may be coming down the pike. And that's something that we'll need to get this in front of council for their consideration. I did not commit to any support. I did ask them how much, and I figured it might present an opportunity of some sort for the city and the school district to partner. Just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, that's, that's needed, and I think that could be maybe one of our fastest resolutions to a problem.
Understood, understood. Let's see, next, first up is Public Works Director Mike Selling.
Thank you, Lorenzo. Just a couple of quick announcements. First off, the council may recall recently, you approved a contract to recoat the reservoir, the big tank, basically, it holds water, at the Golden Heights location. And the contractor's going to be starting work on that on the 4th of December. There's a bunch of sand blasting that will be occurring, and that is a very noisy process that'll probably be taking place over the next about three months or so. So, we are sending out notices to all the residents within a 500-foot radius, make them aware of this, in an effort to, you know, educate them about, about that, and, you know, kind of a pardon our dust, pardon our noise notice for them. We may still get some complaints in the city about noise, but the work will be limited to normal working hours, i.e. about 8:00 to 5:30 or so, Mondays through Fridays only. But that notice will be going out here in the next, well, probably Monday, it might go out tomorrow, but anyway, just wanted to make the council aware of that. And then, I'm going to stand in for Armando briefly, and just note that, reminder that the pool slide meeting or workshop, public workshop, is scheduled on December 12th, and that will be at the PD Community Room from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. So anybody that's interested, we'd encourage you to come out and make your opinion known. And lastly, just to wish everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving. Thanks.
Thank you. Finance Director Matt Boring.
Good evening. I get to share some good news tonight. We received notice that the Government Finance Officers Association awarded the city the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. It's a big mouthful award for our fiscal year 21-22 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. It's the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting. And one of the main emphasis amongst other metrics is to make sure that the report demonstrates transparency and full disclosure. Along with that, the GFOA also presented the city's finance department with the Award of Financial Reporting and Achievement. And just an update, we, the purchase contract was completed today for the CFD 2020-2 Liberty Ranch Bonds today. We had 100% subscription, so all the bonds were sold. The feedback we got from investors was they're very eager and interested in investing in Galt, and the overall interest rates range from 5% for 10-year bonds to 6% for 30-year bonds.
Very good. Police Chief Kalinowski.
Sorry, Mayor and Council. Just a reminder that our holiday open house will be on December 20th from 4:30 to 6:30. It's the Home Alone theme, and we will have stuff posted on social media, and the city will push it out on their end also. So we encourage people to attend and participate, and there's an opportunity to bring a wrap toy for our toy drive program. I'd like to thank the participation of everybody who was there Saturday night for the Back the Blue fundraiser. I know everybody would be there if they could, but we scheduled it at the best time possible, leading into a holiday week, right? So, I guess that's why Littleton was available, but nonetheless, it was a great turnout, a lot of good folks. Supervisor Hume was there and did the live auction portion for us. He's very good about drawing people's money, including mine, out of my pocket, so that went well. City manager and members of the council were there, so thank you for that. They're running the totals of the commitments and everything. I'm sure we've made our goal or very close. In addition, there, we launched our brick program, like, or pavers, like we did out here at the, the memorial at, at City Hall, so there'll be an opportunity for folks to buy a brick, and we'll be pushing that information out on social media. We just launched it this week, so there's still time to make that purchase, a few months to make that happen. And then, Councilmember Farmer did mention about the, the COPS grant, the SRO. I'm bringing that to you on December 21st, so that's where you can expect that. And like Mr. Selling said, I wish everybody a safe and happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes staff comments.
Thank you, sir. Comments by city council members and future agenda items? Vice Mayor Sandu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you for the staff, thank you, city manager, gave us a good report, hardworking, and I also like to thank you, everybody's public comment. That's very important, and that's very important issue, too. And I also like to thank you, the three emails we received regarding the cannabis. Thank you for everybody sending us an email. The, the event I attended, Back the Blue BBQ, Officer Hermindar Sangarewa, it was great turnout, the event was sold out, we raised some fund, I thank you for Chief and POA. Everybody have Thanksgiving. Thank you, and that's, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Papadou.
Thanks to all the staff, and congratulations on the awards there in finance, it's remarkable to you and to city manager for the, the vast improvements and excellent performance that you guys have brought about. And as far as future items go, I'd like to know if anybody concurs on asking Chief Kalinowski to go ahead and bring us the aforementioned statistics, as much as are available, related to cannabis in various jurisdictions.
I would love to hear those statistics.
Yes.
So, that's a consensus?
Whenever it works. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Farmer? Councilman Farmer.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I wanted to mention, I forgot to mention it earlier because it wasn't really an official thing I went to, but I did want to, uh, put a shout out to the folks at the Seventh Day Adventist Church. I went to the veterans dinner that they do every year. Councilman Sandu, Vice Mayor Sandu actually showed up as well. Very well attended, a lot of people work really hard and to feed all the veterans. It was a lot of people there and I just, um, have a lot of respect for all the people that attended and, um, I can't go through all the names, but you know who you are, who you're involved with putting that event on and it's great and thank you for doing that every year. So I just wanted to mention, and thank you to A to Z Foundation, always big on supporting veterans. They actually donated like $2,000 to the fund that they, they fundraised for that event for. Just to remind everybody, all the holiday stuff that's coming up, I know we have another meeting, uh, on the 5th, but, uh, there is an ice skating rink going in, the city of Galt is putting on, starting, I think it starts Friday, they started installing it today. It's in Old Town, very exciting. It should be there through the month of, um, December. There's also a lot of activities happening, um, down in the, uh, Old Town area, put on by the Chamber and some of the Forestry businesses throughout the, uh, the month of December. So watch for the social media posts from the Chamber and, and, uh, other businesses. The lighting of the night parade, and Armando's not here tonight, but it's on the 2nd, so we come back, it will have been over already. Always a great parade. Well, I encourage everybody to be a part of it. I know it's great to watch it, but being in it is really fun, so get your family together, your organization, your community group or whatever, put a float together. Uh, but if minimum, please come watch the parade. It's, it's always a great night. It's, uh, Saturday, the 2nd, uh, December 2nd. And then lastly, um, you know, there's several, I don't have the dates, but there's several community things going on, coming up. There's a couple of community dinners, uh, ones by South County Services, which I think some of us will be serving at. I think there's another one by, um, I forget who the other organizations, but pay attention to the flyers in people's windows, social media, and check those out. Lots of opportunities for people to have a good meal for the holidays, um, put on by some of these great nonprofits and churches and things. So with that, just want to wish everybody happy Thanksgiving, all of those are here and everybody watching online, be safe. Uh, hope everything goes well for the holiday and get some good food. And that concludes my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Lozano.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of items. To Mr. Lee's, um, question about the education, it's my understanding that during bingo, they do, or prior to bingo, they do have people come in. And so I'll make sure that I reach out to my appointee to encourage some of the items that you brought up as, as educational items as well. I attended the Galt Community Park tennis slash pickleball slash footsall court opening and ribbon cutting with the mayor and vice mayor. Great turnout of pickleball players, which means we probably made the right decision to, uh, put pickleball courts in. There were, I don't know, 50 or 70 people out there. It was, it was quite well attended and continues to be. And so that was, that was good. Galt Chamber of Commercial, Learn, Amy Mendez did an awesome job. And Mr. Hines, if you could pass on my thanks to her for her presentation on economic updates and development in the city. I too attended the Back the Blue barbecue. It was very well done. I think I told the people that put it on, um, how well I thought they did. But Chief, if you could pass along our thanks again and appreciation for that. Uh, I wanted to thank PD and Community Development, uh, and Code Enforcement for assisting a resident with the barking dog issue. You know, outcomes aren't always what we want, but I think the service that we provided and, uh, was quickly done and, and we actually had somebody, uh, in contact with him within a, a day or so. So that was awesome. Want to thank the Sunshine Food Pantry for their, uh, distribution. I wasn't able to make it, I was headed over there and got called away, um, but they did a distribution of turkeys in boxes for the holidays for folks that needed it. And then lastly, uh, to Councilmember Farmer's point about the community dinner, um, the Galt Sunrise Rotary Club is once again hosting the Galt Community Dinner on Saturday, the 16th, from 1:00 to 4:00 at the Littleton Center. Uh, my colleagues will get invitations shortly. Um, but this dinner was on hiatus due to COVID and other community needs, uh, but is back. And so the dinner is a free event, open to everyone in the community, not, uh, not to just those who are, um, needy. It's for everyone. And, um, we'll have a full turkey dinner, uh, usual side dishes, and Santa Claus is scheduled to make an appearance from 1:00 to 3:00. So if anybody wants to come see Santa Claus, we're pulling him from the North Pole for a little bit. Uh, want to thank all the Rotary Clubs in the surrounding region for their, um, for their help and the other community benefit organizations, including the Lions and, and Kiwanis and Lahim and different organizations who've committed to help provide turkeys and assisting with the labor. So that's all I have and everyone have a great, uh, holiday this week, Thanksgiving, and, uh, get some downtime for staff. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the public comment and always the reports. I also attended the Back the Blue fundraiser, it was well attended, I enjoyed myself and it's, it's good to see how giving this community continues to be. Congratulations on the awards. It's always good to see, to get recognized for doing a good job. Uh, I also attended the pickleball, uh, grand opening. Uh, I'm really glad to see it. I played a few times. Uh, it's, it's truly a sport that everybody can play at any age and, and get benefit from. It's, uh, it can be as easy or as hard as you want it to be. On the water slide location, uh, you mentioned that that's at the PD, but I'm checking my phone because I thought it was different and I'm pretty sure I got it from the city. It says Agor Aquatic Center, so am I, is my calendar wrong or?
Uh, my understanding, the meeting, I believe, is at the PD Community Room, uh, but the slide will obviously be at the Aquatic Center, so I don't know if there might have been some confusion there, but we can check and verify if so. But the meeting should be at the PD Community Room.
Okay. I'll, I'll make a note of that, please and thank you.
Yep.
And with that, I would like to end the meeting at 7:16 PM.